Good morning and welcome to City Hall on this exciting morning. We're going to begin this morning with an invocation brought to us by Pastor Joseph Alsay of St. Augustine of Canterbury Episcopal Church, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. David Greenwell will lead us in that. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Blessed are you, O Lord, our God. Yours, O God, is the greatness, the power, and the glory, and the majesty, and the splendor; for everything in heaven and earth is yours. Yours, O Lord, is the kingdom, and you are exalted as head over all. Today, we are especially grateful for this inauguration marking a new beginning in our journey as a people and a city. We thank you for Mayor David Holt's dedication and service to our city, and now pray that in a special way you would shower upon him and his family, especially Stroud, Rachel, George, and Maggie, your life-giving spirit. Fill David with a love of truth and righteousness that he may serve you and this city ably, and be glad to do your will. Endow his heart with your spirit of wisdom that he may lead us in renewing the ties of mutual respect which form our civic life. Use him to bring reconciliation between the races, healing to political wounds, that we may truly become One OKC. Good and gracious God, give our new mayor and all who advise him calmness in the face of storms, encouragement in the face of frustration, and humility in the face of success. Give them the wisdom to know and to do what is right, and the courage to say no to all that is contrary to your statutes of holy law, that working together we may be good guardians of the dignity that you give as a birthright to every human person. Help us to reach out to the suffering and the persecuted, and to protect the poor, the weak, and the immigrant. Help us to reflect your light to others, and to show by our actions that truth, integrity, and service still shape the purpose of the community life we share. Finally, pour down your grace on all of Oklahoma City, so that those who come after us will see beyond the buildings and history and industry of our city to the greater beauty of the goodness and decency of her people. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your love, and all of God's children, said, "Amen."
Please face the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, item 3A from the office of the mayor is something that we haven't done in 14 years. David, would you please come forward? And Rachel will be holding the Bible for David today, and District 1 Commissioner Willa Johnson will be administering the oath of office.
I, David Holt...
I, David Holt...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma...
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
...and that I will not knowingly receive...
And that I will not knowingly receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance...
For the performance...
...or nonperformance...
Or nonperformance.
...of any act or duty...
Of any act or duty.
...pertaining to my office...
Pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law...
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
...as mayor of the City of Oklahoma City...
As mayor of the City of Oklahoma City.
...and as trustee of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust...
And as trustee of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust.
...the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
The Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
...the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
...the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
The Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
...the Oklahoma Riverfront Redevelopment Authority...
Oklahoma Riverfront Redevelopment Authority.
...the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust...
The Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust.
...the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust...
The Oklahoma City Zoological Trust.
...the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority...
The Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority.
...the Emergency Medical Services Authority...
The Emergency Medical Services Authority.
...the Laketoka Reservation Association...
The Laketoka Reservation Association.
...and the McGee Creek Authority...
And the McGee Creek Authority.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Joel, may God... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just say a few words. I feel as if I've given so many speeches along the way here, many of which you may have heard already, so I won't belabor the point, but of course I want to thank you so much for being here, my family, Rachel, George, Maggie. Gosh, you know, what can you say? I think you all can imagine the sacrifices we make to embark on an adventure like this, and so I can't thank them enough, and I love you very much. I want to thank Commissioner Willa Johnson, who once sat here at Seventh Heaven, Ward 7, and it was a great honor to have you administer the oath. I want to thank Father Alsay, thank you for that fantastic invocation. Of course, thank you Vice Mayor Salyer and the members of the council for indulging this this morning, and to all of you for coming. I really would feel remiss, there are so many amazing and important people in my life in this room. I should also say I've got a whole bunch of family members here, my brother who came from Pennsylvania, and folks who came down from Wichita and other places. We also are joined by, you know, so I'm very honored, people who made a real journey to be here this morning. We're joined by the chief of the Osage Nation, Jeffrey Standing Bear. I am the first registered tribal member mayor of Oklahoma City, and this is my tribe, and he is my chief, the Osage Nation, so I'm very honored, yes, for you to come. And we are also joined by, next to him is Ed Summers, who came all the way from Washington, DC, from the US Conference of Mayors. We're very grateful for you making that journey, and I'm anxious to work with you and all the other mayors of America to make sure that our cities are well represented. And we're also joined by my friend and my new partner, the mayor of Tulsa, GT Bynum, who is here as well. As Father Joe said in his invocation, you know, I have talked a lot in my campaign, and now, starting today, in my governance about One OKC. I think that we've had remarkable unity, you know, over the last 25 years, but I think that there are many things that could divide us, and certainly national political forces threaten to do that every day. And I wanted to double down on unity. I wanted to double down on the idea that we could set aside our differences and find a common purpose. And so, that will be my theme moving forward every day of the next four years, that we can move together as One OKC, and that our brightest days still lie ahead if we do so. And we will continue to build a future for people like George and Maggie, you know. There's not a lot of kids here today, although they could have been. There's... They're not in... They're not in school right now, but... Let's see, Rebecca Kay giving that extra applause there. But we all know that the decisions that we're making in this room, and in this building, and in many important rooms in this downtown are for George and Maggie, and for all the kids of Oklahoma City. Things we do here take a long time sometimes to reach fruition, you know. We're just still about to open some major MAPS III projects that were approved by the voters in 2009. So, when we have a conversation that the council and I will engage with you upon in the next few months regarding MAPS IV, we know that we're making decisions and planning projects that really will benefit people who are still in school and still are kids, and we want them to choose to live here, and we want them to love Oklahoma City as much as we do. And to kind of drive that point home, there's really not so many of you that I can't grant, make you this invitation. I'm going to have to do some business after this, but I would really invite you, and Karen and Steve from the mayor's office can open the door, I would love for you to stroll into the mayor's conference room, which is the room just behind here. For the last however many decades, and when I worked here in a previous life, it had the pictures of all the old mayors, and I love those guys, and patience. I love them all. But we decided we wanted something a little more forward-looking, and so when you go in there today, you will see 20 pictures of the kids of Oklahoma City, and they are demographically representative of the kids of Oklahoma City. And that's a different look perhaps than many of us are used to, as we live kind of in our own little bubbles, but that's who we're doing this for, and I wanted those kids to look down on us as we sat in that conference room and we made the decisions that we're going to make in the coming years. With that, I think I'll let you go. There are two other things today, you are most welcome to attend. We'll have a Facebook Live tour of the office, although you are here, so you can see it yourself if you'd like, and you are most welcome to. That's at 2:30, and then at 4:30, we'll be at the Civic Center Hall of Mirrors, and we'll have some food for some local restaurants. We'll have Born in November plane, and we'll celebrate this day. As Vice Mayor Salyer said, we don't do this very often, so we should celebrate. I was thinking, you know, that 14 years ago, we didn't have iPhones, we didn't have Twitter, and Russell Westbrook wasn't old enough to drive yet. So, it's been a while, and we ought to note the occasion and celebrate our city, celebrate our way of life, celebrate our government, of which you are all a part of, and now let's get to work. Thank you very much. Okay. Am I on? I think we're going to get started. I think we're going to begin. I didn't even have to tell everybody, it was going to get a lot more boring, they knew to leave. We might want to shut that door when... Okay. All right, well, first of all, it is not lost on me that everybody up here, and many people in the room, have been here for 10 or 20 years attending council meetings, but it's the guy who just walked in the door that has to preside. So, I hope you will bear with me today. I have tried to prepare, but just remember, I'm a rookie. So, let's begin with item 4 on the agenda, Journal of Council Proceedings. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Then we cast votes, right Francis?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 5, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Jim?
Mayor, there's a few this morning, starting on page 16, under item 9F1, page 16. Item B, 5910 South Douglas, west of that be stricken, the owner secured. Item M, 107 Southeast 34th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner secured. Item N, 1412 Southeast 39th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P, 4417 Northwest 43rd Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item R, 1245 Northwest 43rd Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has removed. Moving to item 9G1B, 5910 South Douglas, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item M, 107 Southeast 34th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item N, 1412 Southeast 39th Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P, 4417 Northwest 43rd Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item S, 1245 Northwest 53rd Street, west of that be stricken, the owner has removed. And then if we go to items, Claims for Denial, item 9L1E on page 19, page 19, Claims for Denial, 9L1E, west of that be stricken, we're doing some further research on that claim.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moving on to item 6, Revocable Permits. We have item 6A, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the American Heart Association to Hold the Heart Walk, April 21st, 2018. Do we have anybody here from the American Heart Association? Would you like to come up and say a few words about the event? And if you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address?
Sure. Connie Christian. My address is 4217 Northwest 60th Street.
I'm Casey Johnson. My address is 14548 North Pennsylvania Apartment 203.
Okay, so we have a walk that's going to start at OU Children's Hospital, because Chuck Spicer is on our board and has graciously invited us to host that. So, we're going to start at Northeast 13th and Children's Miracle Way, and we have a mile walk that's just going to go straight across Lincoln and wrap back around, and then we're also going to do a three-mile walk that will go by GE Global, the Hill, and then come back around on Lincoln. So, and this is April 21st.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That sounds great, yes, of course. Anything else you want to say about the event? Okay.
This is my first time too, so there you go.
All right, we're going to hold each other's hands here.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We want to cast our votes on this, on item 6A. Passes unanimously. Congrats, thanks for coming down.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, we have item 6B, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Leslie's Supper Club, LLC, to hold 4,200 Northwestern Block Party on April 22nd of this year. Do we have anyone from Leslie's Supper Club? Councilman Shadid, do you want to make a motion? All right. We have a motion and a second. We'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. We have item... Okay, we have item 6C, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the March of Dimes Foundation to Hold the March for Babies on Saturday, May 5th, and we do have Tim Miller here to speak...
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to stand before the city council once a year to talk about our great event, the March of Dimes March for Babies. This will be our 38th annual March for Babies, formerly known as Walk America. Takes place, as the mayor said, on Saturday, May 5th. Registration begins at 9:00 AM. The walk itself will begin at about 10:45. Our staging area is on the north side, the north edge of the myriad gardens, just across the street from the Devon Tower. It's a wonderful family event. We expect, depending on the weather, everybody keep your fingers crossed, we expect about 2,000 to 3,000 participants, so we're hoping for good weather. As many of you may know, the mission of, oh, by the way, did I give my address?
You did not, but...
13802 Crossing Way East Edmund, which is in Ward 7, by the way. The mission of the March of Dimes is to fight birth defects and infant mortality. Every year in Oklahoma, 5,500 babies are born. Of that number, 1 in 10 will be born prematurely, so they're dealing with a lot of different issues, a lot of different things, and some of them just don't survive. But our mission is to get that number down. It used to be 1 in 8, then 1 in 9, now it's 1 in 10, so we're making definite progress. I'm proud to tell you, by the way, that 87 cents out of every dollar raised goes toward the mission of the March of Dimes, so I'm very proud of that number. I've been a longtime board member, lifelong Oklahoma City resident, and it's a pleasure to be here today.
Thank you. Councilwoman, would you like to...
I would add that anyone who wants to participate in this event, you can do the day of the event, like I said, registration is at 9:00 AM, or you can go to marchofbabies.org and register online.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is item 6D, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the National Multiple Sclerosis Society to Hold Walk MS of Central Oklahoma on April 14th. Do we have anybody here from the MS Society? All right. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we have item 6E, our last under item 6, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Southwest 29th Business Improvement District Association to Hold Southwest 29th Street Children's Day Festival, Dia de los Niños, on April 22nd. Emma, if you wouldn't mind saying your name and address?
My name's Emma Cradwell. I'm the director for the Southwest 29th District, known as La 29, on the south side of our beautiful river in Oklahoma City. We are the commercial district on Southwest 29th Street between May and Shields. We are over three miles long, as you know. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new mayor, David Holt, and appreciate publicly his support even before he became mayor. He's been attending our meetings and our events in our very much unwalkable streets, regardless of the weather and things that are going on in our politics. He's been there from the beginning, and we look forward to a lot more support from you. And thank you, City Council and all of the members, for your support as well. We all know the festival, I think it's very well-known now that it's one of the largest family festivals in South Oklahoma City. It's all about a world celebration for the well-being of children and their future, and it has become a very powerful observation of our children's needs here in this state, so we're looking forward to growing that event. But beyond that, we have a very special partnership with Oklahoma City Public Schools, and from year two forward, they have been invaluable, not only the teachers, but all of their staff, especially Ms. Daisy Escalera, which is in charge of community relations, and Ms. Rhonda Taylor, who is in charge of the Fine Arts Program. Without Oklahoma City Public Schools, this festival would not be as important as it has become, and we would like for today's meeting record to state that we wholeheartedly appreciate them, and we look forward to many more of these. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Councilman Stone?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Emma, for talking about this event. What time does it start, and what time does it end?
It's Sunday, the 22nd, and it's from noon to 6:00.
Noon to 6:00.
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic. And with that, I would move for approval.
Motion and, was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Emma. All right, now we are going to recess the council meeting, and we will reconvene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. As you heard in my oath, we have many trusts and authorities, many of which we are the members of, and that is the case here, and this allows us some additional authority that we use to manage city affairs. And so, on that note, we will have items A, B, C, and D. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. All items are approved. We now adjourn OC-MFA, and we convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have items A, B, and C here. Is there a motion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast our votes. All the items pass unanimously. We will now adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. And we have four items here. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on these items? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are adjourned from Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and we reconvene as the city council. Welcome back. We now have the consent docket ahead of us.
I would move those items subject to individual consideration.
We have a motion and a second of the items subject to individual consideration. Is there, are there any items that council members would like to pull out?
I'd like to mention P2.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to mention 7A.
And then we also have a couple of presentations.
We do have two presentations this morning, sir.
Okay. Do you want to just go in order?
We can.
Okay. You want to start with the presentations?
We can do that. The first presentation is on the Softball Hall of Fame complex. You know, one of the reasons we passed the bonds when we did last year was to accommodate this and our obligation to the NCAA, and Eric Winger is here this morning to go over the improvements for that project.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm pleased to present this morning, as we work towards additional improvements at the Softball Hall of Fame, this is going to be item 7P1 in your agenda. We've included a brief background in that memo, but as we move forward, one of the things that council recently did was authorize additional bond sales in 2017, and I think the first thing that I'll mention is the work that's going to be included in the presentation today is a part of that 2017 bond program. One of our larger projects, the estimated construction cost of the improvements is $20.3 million. Our architect was Triad Design. They have done a lot of previous work at the ASA Hall of Fame. Their principal is Don Douglas. Then we also had Walt Joyce, who is the on-staff architect that has prepared all the drawings that are ready for us to advertise for bids. So as we look at the additional background and some of the things that are happening, for those that weren't aware, this facility actually opened in 1987. Kind of get your bearings, we've got northeast 50th Street at the bottom. The site itself is identified with a yellow box on this. You also recognize Remington Park to the south, of course, is the Oklahoma City Zoo and, and the Science Museum. I-35 is on the east and Martin Luther King on the west. So just to try to get bearings, it's a large facility. It's not very easily seen from the roadway, so unless you've attended an event, it's, it's got quite a large campus. It hosts the Big 12 Conference, the World College World Series, and then also the World Cup of Softball's also been held at this facility. When we look at the project history, there's been a number of improvements since 1987, and some of those occurred just in recent, you know, the past seven or eight years. And so I've outlined the different phases that were, were done, different portions of this for different reasons. So this first Phase 1, J.L. Walker Construction, back in 2010, finished up about a million and a half improvements. This provided some new locker room, public restrooms, and some new parking for the ESPN trucks that, that host the facility. We had two Phase 2s. The first Phase 2A was completed in 2015 from Flint Co. Construction, about $8 million, and this was extension of dugouts, elevators to the dugout level, new concessions, a sales plaza, and then there was some additional media center and media capabilities that were added. 2B, which was the most recently completed work in 2016, was Cooley Construction for $1.3 million. This was for the hospitality area. And what we're going to talk about today is Phases 3 and 4. So again, the site plan, and this is that yellow box, I'm going to zoom in now, and northeast 50th is at the bottom. But obviously, the main entry is, is off of northeast 50th Street. You'll see the expansive parking area. The main stadium is the one where you actually see the green dot, and it says USA Softball Hall of Fame Stadium. There are three ancillary fields that are there. This provides for tournament play. But you'll see that a lot of the building structures, the right around home plate, this photo is actually taken when there was some other construction in the area as well. The hospitality, if you were to go down the first base line to the end, is the white-roofed building that's farthest right on the site. The ESPN parking lot is, is actually the area that's shown, that is being highlighted right now on the right side of the drawing. So as we move into Phases 3 and 4, these phases were combined, and it was found that we'd be most expeditious in, in having them done as a single bid. Now, the construction is going to be proposed over two seasons, so the Phase 3 work generally would occur this year, the Phase 4 work would complete next year, and then we would make the council's commitment by 2020 to have all the improvements in place, which is what's securing the College World Series through 2035 as a part of that agreement. And so, as I remind you, the, the funding is coming from the 2017 bond program, and those funds come available May of this year. When we look at the scope, we're actually doing some of the largest improvements of all the phases, and so they're going to be done on three levels. We've got the lower level, which is team areas, restrooms, and a press interview space. On the concourse level, concessions, service areas, ticketing, and suites. And on the upper concourse, we have press, and then this is the area that we're actually doing the large seating expansion. It's going to add about 4,000 new seats to the stadium. So I'm going to go level by level very quickly, just to kind of highlight some of those areas. These come out of the plans, and I've highlighted, I know it's very difficult to see some of these, so we'll just circle some of the primary areas, but this is the lowest of levels. This is the lower level or the field level. Everything that you see is behind home plate. Everything that you see on this drawing is a complete new construction. So this is excavation that's going to occur, digging down underneath and actually putting in all these new facilities, including the media hospitality, work areas, the press interview, restrooms, and air, and the elevators. If you look to the outsides, you're going to see two small, thin, blue rectangles. These are actually connecting spaces. In previous phases, the dugouts were constructed with the dugout access. This is actually going to connect those dugout areas with these new hallways constructed below grade into the main area. The largest of the boxes is this media workspace, and that's the largest that you see on the drawing itself. It also includes a media hospitality and some press interview spaces. As we go up to the next level, which is the concourse level, I'm going to bring your attention back out to the outside. You're going to see these two large boxes that are plain in nature. Next one's to the right. These are new ADA access ramps. So one of the biggest things that we're actually working on is bringing up the ADA accessibility of the facility. Obviously, being built several years ago, continue to add elevator facilities, ramping structures. These are those new ramps from the main entry to get to the multiple levels. Outside of those areas are new restrooms that are being constructed, both on the first and third base sides. And then the largest box is suites and radio broadcast. Going up one more level, we're back into this main box, and I know a lot of these look very similar as we look at a ball field, but we're up now on the, on the, on the tallest of the levels of the facility. The largest box that you see in the center is the TV press and also the hospitality. You'll also see companion restrooms also on this level being added, just like on the concourse level. But probably the most significant improvement is the additional 4,000 seats that you see with these two largest boxes that's going to create this new upper deck for the stadium. This will increase the capacity of ASA to about 11,300 seats. If we were to take a slice through the building, this is what that new cross-section would look like. Obviously, the field is to the left, and you can see the existing lower seating that's being highlighted now. The new seating are these new upper decks that you see in this mid and this upper range. And then we also have new camera locations. Something unique about the cameras is that they had to be isolated from the upper deck. Obviously, as fans get to cheering a game and you get vibrations, the, the camera stations are actually isolated from vibration to make sure that you don't see the jumpiness on the TV. So those are a lot of the things that went into the design. Triad Design Group, as I mentioned, is the engineer and architect of record. They did hire a sports consultant to look at other things like sightlines, making sure that a lot of the seats had great views of the field, but then also taking into account a lot of the needs of the media and the press, making sure that we had a, a modern and very up-to-date design. These are what those renderings look like of what's expected to, to be completed in about two years. So at the upper, or the top drawing is the main entry. This would include that new ADA accessible entry points, and this would also include the new ticketing. You can see the new ticket windows that are here that are shown. These are behind those restrooms that I noted on that main concourse. And then this is also a view on the bottom from the outfield, looking back in. You can see those newly, what will be completed seating decks. Then you'll also see behind the, the home plate area, this is where the new suites and some of the media locations will be located as well. So overall, this is what that schedule looks like. And what's, what's a challenge and the reason that the project's being bid is one bid is to have a contractor coordinate, obviously with the World Series itself. And so as soon as the World Series ends this May and in the June timeframe, construction would start immediately. So we're actually bidding this project with your approval today to have bids received in May so that construction can be in effect while we're on the offseason. As we get ready to open next year, we'll actually shut the facility back down for construction. Now, there's going to be some temporary controls. Not everything will be complete. The upper seating won't be complete. We will have elevators. We'll have some versions of restrooms, but not all the restrooms will be complete. So it's going to be a temporary, but also a very usable condition next year, so that the second phase or the Phase 4 will be completed for us to be open May of 2020. So it really gives you just a real quick overview of what these plans look like. This is a project that obviously has taken a lot of coordination, staff's available to answer any additional questions that you might have, and we're ready to proceed upon your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Eric?
What, what do we think the economic impact is of having the World Series here? An estimate of that?
That's probably not a question for Eric.
I know it's not.
It's a good question.
It is.
I think the Chamber has run some numbers on that, or the CVB has. Let us give back to you on that. It's fairly significant, but that's a great question.
Any other questions for Eric or people who aren't in the room? All right. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
And the next item we have a presentation on is item AI, and we have Marva Ellard here this morning, and Catherine Montgomery to talk to us about the old jail.
You are not Marva Ellard.
I'm not Marva Ellard.
I am Marva Ellard, but Catherine Montgomery's going to talk a little bit about some history that I think you all will be interested in, and then I'll, I'll talk about today.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Montgomery. I'm the president and founder of the Preservation and Design Studio. We are architects, interior designers, and historic preservation specialists that have teamed up with Marva for this important project. To begin with, you can see from this slide the rendering that was created in the 1930s while the planning was going on for four, four important public buildings included in a bond issue to be combined with assistance from the federal government, Public Works Administration. We have the county courthouse on the lower right, the city hall there, just moving up. Then we have the municipal auditorium, and in the back, we have the PWA Police Headquarters Building. Next slide, which you can see even closer here. According to newspaper articles at the time, the jail, including the police headquarters building, was actually the keystone for this large undertaking. There were many articles that talked about the need for a new jail, and it was because of that that all the rest of those great big buildings got included in a big bond issue. The next image was taken in the 1950s, and it's probably the image that you're most familiar with, where the camera is looking west with all the big buildings in front. You can see that the jail building is there in the upper left in the back. However, this image, taken in the 1940s and looking toward the east, gives us a great view of all four buildings, including the police headquarters building. The other three buildings are already listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Here we have some historic maps. On the left, a map of Oklahoma City in 1894. And even then, from nearly the beginning of the, of the town, there was a North-South Railroad, the Achison, Topeka, and Santa Fe, and another East-West Railroad, the Choctaw, Coal, and Gault. On the right, Oklahoma City, about half of it anyway, in 1922, having grown, grown greatly and being busier, with the same North-South and East-West rail lines. It was the East-West Choctaw Line that would be removed from the center of downtown Oklahoma City and make those important civic projects possible. Zooming in on those maps, to the left, we have the jail as it was completed around 1949. It was completed in 1936, '37, and you can see it standing alone there in 1949. Then within a few short years, illustrated on the right, the 1952 Municipal Courts Building joined it, but it was, it is separated from it and doesn't actually touch, well, it touches a little bit, the building, but it doesn't really destroy the integrity of the jail building. Next, we have the completed building in 1936 and '37. This image records that completion with the radio patrol. And next, from another diff, from another point of view, we have these images, which are courtesy of the Oklahoma Historical Society Research Center, more of the department's personnel and the motorcycles. So we think that this building just has a great heritage that we don't want to lose. It's important to recognize, to recognize the important history that the building has. And with that, I will turn it over to Marva.
This will not be an easy project, but we feel that it is a project that the city needs to embrace, and we want to do it to honor the building's past and its connection with the police department, its connection with the city, and its connection with all of our history. As you all know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, this part of town has changed drastically just in the last five years. If I've been standing here five years ago, I don't even know if we would have known that 21C was coming. We certainly wouldn't have known Jones Assembly or West Village or First National Arcade or the little movie theater that was announced last week, two blocks away, would be coming. So the character of this neighborhood, or the character of this side of downtown, is changing weekly. I don't know that we would have ever thought that probably 500 people would be moving into this part of town in the next few months just three years ago. So what our challenge is, is to determine uses for the building that will be good for the area and good for city employees and for the city. And so what we're looking at at this time is, what, is that the first floor? Is, yep. We're still developing uses. We haven't defined everything that should be in the building, but we think we've defined uses that will work in this location. And the first would be maybe a small sundry store that could service, thank you, that could service city workers, visitors to 21C, visitors to the Civic Center, people working on productions at the Civic Center, and other people working in the area. We're also looking at a diner on the first floor. That would be a real diner. I think, I've heard many of my male friends lament the passing of Lunchbox. And so it would be nice to have something that kind of harken back to chili and spaghetti and corned beef and also include breakfast. We think that some of the workers at the Civic Center on productions would appreciate a place to go, workers in the courts building, the police department. Hopefully, it would turn into a little neighborhood gathering spot. A fitness center is also something that we're considering. I have an acquaintance that is in that business and is interested in putting that in the old jail building. I think John's Fitness Center would extend to the second floor. But I did have one of those shower thoughts. I'm sure all of you have shower thoughts, too. So I decided that boxes don't care what they look at out the window, so maybe we should move John's business higher up in the building. You know, the roof of the jail at one time was an exercise yard for policemen, so it might be kind of neat to tie that in and move that farther up. And we're, I was listening to Steve Lattmeyer's chat on Friday with Roy Williams, and they were talking about incubator businesses. We've talked about office space in this building. Maybe this might be a place where we should try some incubator space. And then we were talking about record storage in the building. That's been quite an education to me to get up to speed on record storage, but it is, seems to be a relatively profitable business. And we have very secure space for record storage. So those are some of the uses that we're thinking about. We're very excited about it. We've wanted to do this project for quite a while and look forward to further negotiations with Mr. Bryant and Ms. Story and the council. Any questions?
Really want to appreciate you for considering taking this on. It will not be an easy project, but it is a great building that forms part of this WPA axis. So I've got my fingers crossed.
Thank you.
You can make this work.
I share Mayor Holt's affinity for County Commissioner Johnson. She was one of my first supporters on the SEABR project that we did, and I got to talk to her for a minute, and she said, I think it exceeded all of our expectations and did more for that area than we ever thought it would. And she said, not that we didn't squabble some in the process, so I hope this is a similar outcome.
Ms. Ellard, thank you for the presentation and your interest. I do have some questions, though, for City Manager Couch. So what's the process, Jim? We're going to come back in a period of time with a more specific proposal?
Right, with a PERFORMA attached to it, so we can take a look at the PERFORMA and see what type of assistance may be necessary and what tools we may have to, to come to a successful project.
Should this project go forward, would that free up any exist, any future space that the current, or the former police headquarters now takes up? I mean, how much of that land will this project need?
You know, where our plans are, and the monies that we did in the '07 bonds when we put in the, the police headquarters and the courts facility, was to tear down the old courts building and the old police headquarters, not this old police headquarters, the most recent.
Yes.
Police headquarters, and, and put in some parking in there to support those, those facilities. It could be done with this building standing or without this building. It could be done with this building standing or without this building standing. And so we're looking right now, is there an opportunity to save this building? And so, you know, yes, it'll impact slightly the amount of parking that's in there, but it won't impact our overall plans for the area.
Okay. And so this resolution that we're going to be voting on today, what does it do as far as a commitment by the council? Just provides additional time?
Yeah, we're designating them as our designated developer on it.
Right.
And then setting for some timeframes for them to get with us to work out any financial details that need to be worked out.
But there's no further commitment by the city at this point in time?
Right.
We're not locking ourselves to any decision at this time?
We're designating them as the designated developer.
Okay. And what is this timeframe until we hear back?
Six months?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
We anticipate trying to get an agreement back to council by the end of June, with the hope to try to start construction with 120 days after that.
If approved?
If approved. But they've got to come up with evidence of financing, finalize their plans for what they're wanting to do on each floor, and then they'll submit schematic drawings, design documents, and all of that stuff to us for our approval. And then, as things progress, potential could be to begin construction fourth period of, fourth quarter of 2018.
Okay. Ms. Ellard, I do have a question for you. I'm sure all of this effort and activity will require some expenditures of funds. Are you prepared to go forward with this, knowing that it may not be accepted by the city?
Councilman Greenwell, most of the projects we do fall into that category. We have to spend money to figure out if it's feasible for us as well as for you all, and we're prepared to do that.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you for your interest in this. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions on that item? Councilman Griner, we got a little bit out of order, but I know you wanted to talk about item P2.
Yeah, item P2 is the final plans and specs for Route 66 part improvements out there. It's being funded by the 2007 bond issue. The things that are going to be happening out there is an adaptive baseball field, which is essentially a baseball field that has a rubber surface, so it enables wheelchairs and other disabled people to play baseball, which is a cool project. Then the other parking lot improvements, infrastructure improvements, and landscaping. Total, it's going to cost about 1.2 million. Construction's going to begin in the summer and be completed late this year, but I like to under-promise and over-deliver, so I'm going to say the complete date is spring of 2019.
Okay.
Just, that's mine. Our memo says end of the year, though, so I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Councilman Gene?
Can I speak to N? This is an item which authorizes you to request from HUD about $200,000 of CDBG funds for the First Step Campus. I think this is a good example, it's a great example, of how the city can join the effort to provide addiction services to citizens of Oklahoma City. So many people and their families have been assisted by the First Step Campus, which is out at Lake Draper. This is land owned by the city, sober living environment. People can work and receive some therapy and live in a safe environment. I think this is a great utilization of CDBG funds and example of how the city of Oklahoma City could join that fight. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anything else anybody wants to address on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. And no further discussion, we'll cast our votes on all the items on the consent docket. Passes unanimously. That means that we move on in the agenda. For those following along at home, to page 13, item 8, the concurrence docket.
Move those items subject to individual consideration?
We have a motion and a second. Of course, these are items, we list these here as an opportunity to be transparent with actions of some of our trust, but we are merely concurring. Is there any discussion on any of these items? If not, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to items nine now, and these are items requiring separate votes, so we will be considering all of these individually. And we start with item A1, Amendment to Master Design Statement to Add Section 8.4 Regarding Electronic Message Display Signs. There's also an item A2, but these will need to be separate votes. Hey.
Hi.
Please, you're obviously here to address items, item A, please state your name and address for the record.
Troy Humphrey with Land Run Commercial Real Estate Advisors, 114 Northwest 6th Street, here on behalf of the applicant, SGK Properties. With the amendment, we agree with that, and so really, I'm here to speak more in detail or answer any questions about this SPUD application, which is item 2.
Okay.
John had to leave, and he asked me to move this item, so I'll move item 9A1, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Is there a motion on 9A2?
Move the item.
Motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, cast our votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 9B1 and 2. 9B1, Amendment to Master Design Statement, Section I9 and I10 Regarding Access and Sidewalks. And then item B2, Ordinance on Final Hearing. REMECA Recommended for Approval of SPUD 1043 at 901 North Villa Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Well, Mayor, I see that the applicant is here.
Okay.
This is an amazing project. This is to build a formal home for Positive Tomorrow's, which is the school providing educational opportunities for the too many homeless children that are in our school system. This property is on the campus of North Care, and I see that Randy Tate is here, and Susan Ogilvy, who's the director of the school, is here as well. This is something that has been a wish for many, many years. They've just completed, maybe not completely completed, I don't want to cut off the opportunity for more donations, but they're close to completing a very successful capital campaign to make this happen. Susan's board has worked super hard. They're currently located in a church roughly at 18th and Class, and they were able to acquire the church property a couple of years ago. Thought about converting that into the school, and it wasn't a perfect fit, but they were able to sell the church and make this dream come true. So it will begin as an elementary school through the fifth grade, and with hopes that over time, we may be able to expand both into a middle school and a high school. Now, it is a wonderful, wonderful project, and I congratulate you for the stick-to-itiveness that it took to make this happen. So with that, I would move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on item 9B1. We'll go ahead and cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And then, is there a motion on 9B2?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cast our votes. That item is approved unanimously as well. Moving on to item 9C, Ordinance on Final Hearing Recommended for Approval to Close 150 Feet of Street Right Away at 109 Northeast 40th Street. Did Councilman Pettis leave you with direction on that as well?
He did. This is the closing, Your Honor, of 150-foot street right-of-way. It's to allow for the development of adjoining properties. It was approved by the Planning Commission, and there are no objections that I'm aware of, so I'd move the item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak on it? I see none. We'll cast our votes. Item 9C passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding ordinance related to taxation, amending Chapter 52, Article 4, Division 2, Section 52151 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code. This is the second of three steps when we amend a codified ordinance. Last meeting, there was a presentation, and this is the public hearing. So is there anyone here today or on the council who wishes to speak regarding item Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E, Public Hearing Regarding Dilapidated Structures. Okay, we have the list there in front of you. Should I read these all?
No, you should ask if anyone has here, too.
Okay, yes, very good. Is there anyone here to speak on any of these items? 9E1, A, B, C, D. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Do we have to do two as well?
I see that.
Move on, okay. Moving on to F1, Public Hearing Regarding Unsecured Structures. There are quite a few items, some of which were continued in earlier comments. Are there any citizens here who would like to speak on any of these items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G1, Public Hearing Regarding Abandoned Buildings. We have items A through T. A few of the items were continued earlier. Is there any citizen here who would like to speak on item, anything on 9G1?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we are on item 9H1, Resolution Approving the Request for Salary Continuation for Corporal Jeremy Ferris. Do we need executive session for this?
We do not.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are now on item 9I1, Resolution Authorizing Richard Smith and Sherri Katz, Assistant Municipal Counselors, to represent and defend former city employee Ken McDonald and city employee William City in the case of Olivia Lena Daniels versus the City of Oklahoma City. Do we need executive session on this?
We do not.
Move the item.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. We will cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9J1, Resolution Authorizing Municipal Counselor's Office to Settle the Case of Shannon McCarty versus the City of Oklahoma City. Do we need executive session for this?
We do not.
Move the motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to 9K. I believe we
We do.
Do need executive session. And this is to receive confidential communications to discuss the case of Charlotte Red versus the City of Oklahoma City, and I would like a motion to go into executive session.
Move the item into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will go into executive session following the other items on our agenda. We will now return to 9L1, Claims Recommended for Denial. Is there anyone here to speak on any of these items under 9L1?
Second.
Seeing none, we will cast our, we have a motion and a second, so we will cast our votes. Passes unanimously. I didn't ask, we didn't need executive session, obviously, on that.
We do not.
Item 10A1, Claim Recommended for Approval. Do we need executive session here?
We do not.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are now through with items requiring individual consideration, and we are on 11, and items from council. We'll start with the resolution. This is for travel and reimbursement for Councilman Stone Cypher to attend the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber 2018 DC visit and represent our city to our federal officials.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. This requires six votes. Is there any discussion? If seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And now, I believe it is the custom to go around the horseshoe. I'm told that my predecessor would surprise you with which direction he began. I may try to be more predictable than that. I'm looking at you, though, Councilman Griner, so let's begin there today.
Just welcome. It's been good having you as my senator for eight years, and I'm looking forward to you as our mayor. They're going to miss your voice of reason at the Capitol, but I'm glad you're here.
Not bad, 9:30. I want to, I was invited to an interesting meeting with former Councilman Pete White yesterday, which I want to talk about, but first, I just want to express my gratitude, David, for the emphasis that you're placing on diversity. It warms my heart. It's so important. I think that things like changing the pictures in the mayor's conference room or being photographed with different religious leaders, including a Muslim cleric, I mean, they might seem like small things to some people, but they're very, very big things, and they change things. And you're providing that leadership, and I'm very grateful. You know, there's like a, I like to talk about, there's like 100 trillion bacteria in our gut, and it's, as we get older, we lose diversity. And that loss of diversity actually makes us weaker, predisposes us to illness and mental health. Diversity keeps us strong, and I think the same thing applies here. Having diversity on the horseshoe, on the boards and commissions, makes us stronger as a city, and I'm very excited about what you've been saying and doing. So along those lines, there's a group that I think is planning on coming here in two weeks to speak under items from council. They want to meet with the mayor and council and just have, start a dialogue. This is something that Pete White's been working on for decades, which is just explore the idea of increasing the number of wards in the city. It's been 100 years, basically, since 1927, that we've had eight counselors, and the population, obviously, has exploded. So they're just looking, you know, it's been 100 years, like I said, just to begin that dialogue and talk about what that might look like. They asked me, I honestly don't know, I thought 10, and then they presented some data from peer cities that was convincing for 12, but I honestly don't know what the answer is. And so that's why I would hope that we could all engage them, and that'll be, they're coming in a couple of weeks. They also mentioned, and I've read this on other social media, that of the 10 largest cities in Oklahoma with the largest population, and I just don't know about the next 10, but of the 10 largest Oklahoma cities, the only city council that meets during the day, Tulsa, Enid, Shawnee, Lawton, Norman, Edmond, they all meet at night. And I know we tried that, Mark Schwartz brought this, and I think we tried it in the past, but it's something else that we might just consider or enter into that same dialogue. Again, David, thanks for your leadership on that, on the diversity.
Thank you. Thanks.
Welcome, Senator. Now, Mayor, you were excellent in your conduct of the meeting, and we look forward to serving with you, sir.
Thank you.
Just a couple of announcements of things that happened in Ward III over the last couple of weeks. The Most Great Pennington Neighborhood Association had Neighborhood Alliance come out and put on an excellent program, very well received by the neighbors, about quality of the neighborhood and how to improve it. And then the Windsor Area Business Group sponsored a Easter festival that was very well attended by the neighbors around 23rd and Meridian. And then finally, West 10, even though they had significant bad weather this past Saturday, sponsored a very nice operation out at the Lions Club on Northwest 10th Street for the neighbors out there. So it's good to see these people getting involved with the neighborhood and looking at the quality of life for all our citizens. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor. Really excited and looking forward to working with you. As much as I think we all hated to see Mayor Cornet leave, really excited to see what you're bringing to the table, and just looking forward to the great opportunity of working with you.
Thank you, likewise.
Mayor, congratulations and welcome. I, too, am looking forward to this new beginning. And again, as others have said, I've always thought Mayor Cornet was open and welcoming, but anytime there's a change, it does create new opportunities, new lines of contacts, just a variety of new ways of sharing information. So I'm looking forward to that. I think it's healthy that we go through this process, and again, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
David, I just echo those comments, really look forward to working with you. This is going to be exciting, great new opportunities, and a fresh look to help all of us move the city forward. So thank you so very much for that. I had just two quick comments that I wanted to, would like to congratulate the Curbside Chronicle for their successful winning of an additional $50,000 grant from Google. It's super exciting.
It's super exciting. They were competing against three other of the most wonderful organizations, I think, that we have working in these areas. Reemerge was one of them, the YMCA and Sunbeam, and each of those were recipients of $50,000 grants, but Curbside received an additional $50,000. So, hats off to everyone that voted for them. And I also want to thank the City County Health Department and all of their partners. I think there were 60 partners with them participating on Sunday in Open Streets, and I don't know if you were able to be there, but it was chilly. But once you got moving, which was the whole idea, the weather was perfect, and there were lots of folks out on bikes and skates and dogs and kids and face painting, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to get everybody out and recreate. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, as I saw you getting sworn in today, and your family was there, a thought came to mind that, I thank you so much for making this commitment, and I think you're going to do a great job, but I want to thank your family for this commitment, because it's a big commitment on their part, and so, God bless your family, good luck with your job. I think with your great ideas and our tenacity, the best is yet to come. One quick announcement, we had a dedication Friday in Ward 8 on Martin Nature Park. It was an $880,000 project that refurbished the facilities, built an ADA-friendly deck out over the lake, and it is outstanding. I learned a lot about the park. It takes a long time to make a successful park. This park first started in 1961, when J.T. Martin, Dr. J.T. Martin, was the driving force behind buying this land, and in 1975, it was dedicated. He never knew the park was made in his name, I would suspect, but the additions to that park and how it's grown over time, we have 160 parks. This is the number-one park for attendance in Oklahoma City, and I'm just really proud of it, and I encourage everyone to go see what's been done out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, that was not necessary, all your comments, all your very kind comments, but thank you, and I, I'm so excited to work with you guys, and I view this as a very collaborative team that we're a part of now, so thank you so much. We will move on now to city manager reports. Mr. City Manager, is there anything?
We have nothing this morning.
Okay. We do have claims and payroll under there, but that is only informational and does not require a vote. We will move on now to item 13, Citizens to Be Heard, and I believe we have had one citizen sign up, and that is Mr. William E. Gonzalez. Is Mr. Gonzalez here? Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, if you would come to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then, obviously, as always, keep your comments to three minutes.
William Gonzalez, 1032 Southwest 69. May I give the council a couple of pieces of paper?
I'm sorry?
May I give you all some paperwork?
Sure. Is that?
Sure, of course.
Nobody briefed me on a paper rule before I got here.
Okay, Oklahoma City taxpayers paid $75,000 to Billy McKinney for cops retaliation on Chad Perry. Oklahoma City taxpayers paid $18,000 for an illegal search. Sergeant Keith Medley freely stretched the truth. Oklahoma City pays $187,500 for an off-duty cop, Christopher Howard pointing a gun at somebody. Oklahoma City taxpayers paid $210,000 because Chief City blocked the investigation of a crooked captain. Oklahoma City is being sued by the women who raped Daniel Holtzclaw. I brought to the attention, this council, the actions of Officer Brian Poole. The police report shows his action. You should read it. The council had me meet with Chief City right out there in that hallway. I told Chief City, my son said Officer Brian Poole took money and planted evidence out of his car glove box, and then put the money and the evidence in my son's shirt pocket and said, "It's still in your possession." The Chief City stated, "Well, that's your son's version of it," like my son was lying. Then, the Deputy Chief, Tom Gester, standing with him, told Chief, "He did do that." Then, City said, "Well, Poole still didn't do anything wrong." If the people on this council would do the right thing and then read the police report, they will read, Poole stated, "The jailer found the so-called drugs wrapped in dollar bills and in his shirt that the officer had took and put there." Okay, after the jailer finds this, the patrol officer says he takes and field tests out of his car, tests it positive for cocaine. Well, why, why, why would he take it to his car? Don't they have the ability to check for contraband at the jail? I guess not. If he's already tested and put it in my son's pocket. Then, he stated, he started to pile on charges. Poole knew or should know that even if my son was intoxicated, and that's questionable with an officer that'll plant drugs on somebody.
Mr. Gonzalez, we are over three minutes now. If you wouldn't mind just bringing it towards a conclusion, that'd be awesome.
Well, with all this brought to your attention, is there going to do anything about this police chief? Chief is either part of the problem, he's complacent in what's going on, or he doesn't have control of his officers. But if y'all would just look and see, read the evidence, you'll know that that officer did not do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for coming down. We will, are there any other citizens to be heard who did not sign up? All right, we will now move on to, we are going to recess into executive session to discuss the item that we previously voted on to go into executive session in regards to, and so we are only in recess, and we will return.